Hello, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting for the Town of Buna Vista, Colorado. It is July 23rd, 2024. The time is seven o'clock. And I would ask that you silence your cell phones. And I'll call this meeting to order. And would you call the roll, please, Paula?
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee, hi.
Here.
Trustee McCretzy.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rosenhauer. Trustee Rowe.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Great. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trustees, you have recorded an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any modifications that anyone would like to suggest for the agenda? In that case, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as drafted. So move.
Second.
So we have McCretzy and Rice, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. And then you have the consent agenda. And included in the consent agenda are various minutes from commissions and boards, as well as the town clerk report, the treasurer report, and the second quarter 2024 finance report, the recreation director report, and the airport manager report. I was kind of surprised to see the treasurer report in there. But I don't have any issues with the treasurer report. So I was pleased to see that sales tax in May is up a bit, which is good. So it's not continuing the downward trend that we've been experiencing. Does anybody have anything that's in the consent agenda that they would like to pull out as a business item for further discussion? In that case, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
So we have Hike and Swisher, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? So the motion passes. And so now we are at the part of our meeting for public comment. And when I, you should have signed in on the clipboard. And when I call your name, I'd like for you to go to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address at the beginning, and then your three minutes will start. So the first person we have is Liz.
Hello, I'm Liz Morgan. My address is 120 South San Juan Avenue. And I'm the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I just came to give you a quick update on the Welcome Center, even quicker update on the Chamber. We, the Welcome Center has been reopened after being closed for several years, for a month now. And we have, we're fully staffed by volunteers. We're open five days a week, 11 to three weekdays. That was just, we had a volunteer training, and that's what everyone decided that they could commit to. So we've been doing that for a month. And the volunteers are all tracking how many people are coming in. So we have a great spreadsheet. And we've had, so far, so just 10 to three weekdays, one Saturday, we've so far had 301 walk-ins, 67 phone calls that the volunteers are fielding. And that's been taking a huge amount of work off of my shoulders so that I can focus more on operational stuff, relationship building, planning, financial strategy and planning, and all the millions of other things that go into running the organization. And they're keeping track of questions of interest. So we're getting a sense of what are people even coming in and asking about so that when we put together printed materials in the future, we'll have, we'll be able to have really targeted materials about what, you know, to really answer the questions. And so after resurrecting an organization that was pretty much out of business, or at least unstaffed for four months, it's a wonderful breath of fresh air to have volunteers just in, in the front office, having conversations all day long, and just having the people in and around the Chamber and the Welcome Center. We've got some new board members also. So things are looking up, we're alive, we're not financially stable at all. We're working on that. The next few months will be all about figuring out what our financial plan is going to be. Some of our goals at the Welcome Center are, of course, serving our members is first and foremost, sending people to businesses, telling people about events. And we're serving locals and visitors. Locals call and walk in also and ask all kinds of questions. It's not just for visitors. Let's see. I also really have a goal to promote, to do more promotions on responsible recreation, fire safety, leave no trace at your campsites, off-road vehicle etiquette. And we've been talking with Envision and the Colorado CTO, Colorado Trade, whatever they're called, or not Trade, sorry, Tourism Office, and the Visitors Bureau and other organizations to collaborate. I love collaborating as much as we can on different projects. We're deciding what our schedule is going to be in the off-season. For the rest of the summer, we are, we are going to be open some Saturdays. Tom is going to talk in a minute. It's open Saturday day, and that was by far the biggest day so far. We're also seeing numbers creep up since we put the banner up. And I also really wanted to thank Jamie in Planning and Zoning for helping, teach me how to apply for a sign permit and make that process really seem easy. Let's see. Yeah, so that's really about it. We're, we're, we're just continuing to invite people in and talk to us. And if any of you guys want to talk about anything, feel free to stop in. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. Our next speaker is Tom Brown. Welcome back, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, trustees. I'm Tom Brown, 230 Brookdale Avenue. I'm also Planning and Zoning Commissioner, but that has nothing to do with my discussion here tonight. I'm a volunteer for Liz with the Welcome Center, and I want to say that it's a fantastic opportunity. I encourage you all to stop on by and visit us, talk to us, and see what we're doing. And I think the best perspective you can get is talking to the volunteers as to what we're, the feedback that we're getting from the people who are coming in to visit us. What I'd like to talk about a little bit is the return on investment. And I think what we're doing, and Liz gave you the numbers, in three weeks, we talked to over 360 people. That's more restaurants visits, the rafting tourists, that's more gasoline, that's more grocery store, that's more things, the CKS rafting, and more camping supplies, and our camping supply stores around town. And I think it's an important component as you guys look at the budget for next year. Retail sales are an important component to that. And I hope that you'll continue to support the Chamber with the resources, then with the basis that it gives you positive return on investment and improve your economics well-being for both the businesses in Buna Vista and then also for the citizens, and then ultimately for the tax base. It helps us all be able to continue to move the town forward. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Mark, Mark McCam. McCone?
McCone, sorry, that's my.
Yeah, I'm just going to talk on a more personal level. I think it's helpful for us volunteers to be able to come out and volunteer. And I thank Liz and Maggie, too, over there, for giving me a volunteer opportunities. I've had a lot of health issues over the last few years. I had a femoral surgery last May, so I had two pinched nerve roots. So I was basically paying 24/7 and not coming out of that, getting out that much. So I'm feeling a lot better. And it's, for someone my age, and I know a lot of elderly people feel this way sometimes, you get to not get out much, and you start to feel like a shut-in. So this, this has been helpful for me to get out and chat with people. And it, it's also, I'm a good resource for that because I've been here for a little over 12 years. And I was, before my neck problems, logging probably 50 or more hikes a year. So I really know all over here. And anyone asks me a question about that, I know all the different kinds of hikes and stuff to do. And as well as, I was an avid fly fisherman, too, so I've had questions on that. So I'm able to give people directions on where to go. And I have been given out some of my secret spots. But, you know, hopefully, hopefully the people will be back. And I think that's a big benefit, having somebody like me there, you know, giving people advice and things. Because a lot of people, they come in, and the first thing they say is, what's there to do here? You know, it's like, what do you want to do? And so, and plus restaurants, too, since I've been here for quite a while, I've had, you know, people come back and thank me for the suggestion I made afterwards. So I think, you know, by, you know, helping these tourists out and everything, it's a good chance they'll come back. And which also, you know, you know, our lifeblood is the tourism. So it'll be nice, you know, if they do return. Also, there's, you know, you can avoid things like having people not come because of the bubonic plague. That was one question, one question I got on the phone. There were some people from Arkansas were concerned about the plague. So I, you know, was able to assure them that that's not a concern here. So, but anyway, that's about all I had to say. It's, I think it's a great resource for the town, just, you know, to help out the people that have come to visit us and spend money.
Thank you. It's nice to get everybody's differing perspectives on it. Now, we're missing one person, right, Liz?
Yeah, I don't think she made it.
Okay. So the next speaker is Kathy Horline. Please give your name and address.
Kathy Horline, 832 Yale Avenue. And trustees and mayor and staffs. I have two concerns, safety concerns. One is the five crosswalks on Highway 24 have experienced cars driving through those warning lights quite often. And I really think that the lights on the warning signs that are there should be replaced with signs that have continually flashing lights going around that sign. And I, instead of the three blinking lights that are at the bottom, two sides and the bottom of the sign. And I think it would catch drivers' attention much better to have that. I know we can't do the red signs because it's the highway, but we've experienced lots of cars just driving through and really need to be careful to step out. The second concern is the bike pedestrian lanes. And I've noticed more comments from folks about safety and no connecting lanes for riding and lack of rules of the road. Obviously, we have more people here and many other kinds of transportation. There's road bikes, mountain bikes, e-bikes, scooters, skateboards, and even motorized scooters. And I'm a big advocate for having designated bike lanes for riders and that the majority of people would use them if they're there. Both sides of roadways and county roads should have paved lanes so bikes travel in the same direction as cars. It's like ride right, walk left. If not continuous lanes, riders and people end up possibly crossing to the other side, which is just not safe. Even at the comprehensive, comprehensive plan opened house, people rode in to finish pedestrian lanes on Highway 24 or have lanes on both sides of roadways. An example is Crossman Road, which is in a wonderful now and safe and enjoyable. There needs to be more seamless and safe travel for bikes and pedestrians here. Waters on Crossman, the only other section that needs to be finished is from Waters to the highway on that north side. And otherwise, you have lanes on both sides all the way to 361. An opposite situation is the east lane on County Road 317. It's problematic for users going both directions as the lane is not wide enough. My husband Scott recently experienced this. He was riding north into town, and a young rider was riding south and would pass each other. And the, the young person really looked nervous and scared to Scott. And there wasn't, and there was a car traveling on the road that was right, right next to where they'd be passing. And there wasn't much space to really pass each other safely. So if there was enough room for a separated trail from the, from the road, the trail could be widened, and you could have a painted line down a wider trail that would separate the directions of, of travel. But there really is, there should really be a bike pedestrian lane on that west side so that they're the same. I have some suggests or recommendations. One, I think the stencils that are on the lanes with the bike rider and the arrow for direction of travel are great, and they should be increased. I know Sean Williams has different sizes that can, of the stencils that can, you know, fit on the different widths of the signs. And I think they're a great visual cue. I think education and review and reminders of rules of the road for pedestrians and bike riders could be possibly put in the water bills, flyers, Chatty County Times, maybe the schools. Possibly police officers or rec department staff can remind kids on bikes and scooters, skateboards, and motorized scooters. With e-bikes now, we have e-bike and bike rentals. And I do think they should be responsible in educating riders on the correct riding and signaling. Many rentals search or serve larger groups or families that may be here for the first time, and they may not be aware of the bike rules, road rules. I don't know what the situation is for the liaison for the board. The possibly trustee liaison could work with the trail board, the rec department to support safer, safer bike pedestrian travel here in the town.
So that concludes our public comment. Thank you all for your well-thought-out comments. And now we have a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club. Dustin and Brian here with us.
Hello, thank you. Again, my name is Dustin Nichols. I live there in Buna Vista over on Pleasant Avenue. And I'm happy to come before you tonight. This is Brian Lou. He's our Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club. Some of you are new to the trustee board. And so we want to take this opportunity to give you an update and tell you a little bit about the project. And so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, Brian, for getting us on the schedule, coordinating that, and all the town staff that we've worked with throughout this process. And thank you, trustees, for all the support that you've given us throughout this entire process. Including you. So yeah, that will just go ahead and start. So this here is kind of an overview, or we were looking straight up this way. This is what you'd be seeing over here on the skate pad, the old skate pad. So it's just a rendition of that. We'll go to the next slide. This here is kind of a timeline that just gives you an overview of when we started, when we started, and where we are now. So in 2017, we had a strategic planning session, Boys and Girls Club did, and sat around for a whole Saturday and decided that the number one priority that we had was new facilities, adequate facilities, suitable facilities for the Boys and Girls Club in both Salida and Buna Vista. We went on to raise a $20 million for our Salida Club and got property purchased and moved in and renovated. And we still did a few things there. And then we moved on to talk with town, some of the staff members who are here today, about how we could partner and what properties might be available that we could partner on and what a partnership with Town Rec might look like. And then we went on to go and develop those partnerships. And in 2020, we hired a design firm. This was our Phase One architect. That was responsible for giving us a conceptual plan and help us work with children at the club, kids that don't even attend our club, and also community members, donors, supporters, to help us understand, give us feedback on our plan and help us even conceptualize it. So it really started with the kids. They drew out plans, our architect did all kinds of wonderful things with them to help them understand the design process. And we turned it into a teaching model, which was really fabulous. So we went on from that in 2020, when we gathered more input in 2021 from community members and whatnot, and got a lot of good feedback and incorporated that into our design. And then we signed an MOU with town to, with the intention of creating a ground lease that we would execute and be for 99 years, and that we'd also enter into facilities use agreements and shared use agreements and those sorts of things. And then 2022, we, we started our capital campaign. We kicked it off. And we secured our first major investments, our REIT investments at that time. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Scott Urschel, and other folks who were part of making that happen. 2023, we signed with the approved approval of town. We signed and executed a 99-year ground lease, $10 a year. Thank you very much. And so we have until, I believe it is 2026, January, and to break ground. And so we're firmly working towards that. And 2024, we've reached about $4.5 million in fundraising and capital raises. So now we're moving forward with raising the remainder of that. And Brian will speak more about that as we move forward to this next slide. So this is just a side of plan, kind of looking down at the building. This is all not through the process yet completely. This gives you an idea of what we've got going here on Evans and Cedar Street, parking lot, top-down view, a ground, all that sort of thing. We'll go to the next slide. This here is a floor plan. This is the first, first floor floor plan. And it shows the gymnasium. And we, we worked with Town Rec quite a bit on this gymnasium and how it, how it lay out and how the flex space could be used and what sort of activities could go on there that would best benefit Town Rec's programming needs in our community. And, you know, there's space apart from the two cross-court basketball courts and two cross-court volleyball courts and the full-size center volleyball court and the high school size basketball court. This floor really kind of serves as a community gathering space, too, apart from just Health and Rec and that sort of thing. It's kind of speaks to that gentleman earlier who was talking about being a shut-in. It gives our seniors a safe place to go as well and have community and mentorship and all those wonderful things that can take place. So I wish to provide. You can see, too, some more of the floor. So that's kind of the gymnasium space I talked about there. And then that lower section is the programming space for the Boys and Girls Club. And that's kind of where the heart of what we do is a youth programming organization or working towards. And so it has a climbing wall in there. There's a musical theater section there. There's a teen space, game rooms, bathrooms. There's space for the director's office and other admin staff. That's a reception area. We've got a vestal, vestal, folks can come in and securely check in, this sort of thing, to increase the safety of our club. And we'll go to the next slide. This here is the second floor floor plan. That purple around the gymnasium space there, that's the walking track. That's going to be a wonderful thing. It's been a very popular thing with the people that we talk to about fundraising. In fact, one of our very first donors specifically was very interested in this aspect of our club and gave us a $500,000 contribution. Additionally, upstairs, we've got the, we've got a team-making, a creator space, maker space, if you will. We have a leadership center. This can also be a place where our partner organizations can hold classes, conduct things, Town could have meetings there, those sorts of things. STEM programming place and a learning center. And there's also an elevator kind of tucked in there by that purple place where you can get up and down. If you should move that, we'll go to the next slide. And so what's the impact of this new facility? We're going to double our annual membership, we believe, from about 326, 340 kids. And that would include high school students who really don't serve right now as they just have no interest in going over to Avery Parsons and sitting in the hallway. It'll provide a safe location for older youths being. It will serve as a community gathering space for our partner organizations. It'll create jobs and support our local workforce. Our local workforce, as a banker and as someone who talks to a lot of small business owners, the Boys and Girls Club, and to a lot of professionals that I work with, they work long hours, they're single parents, they need a place for their kids to be. It needs to be a place where they're not just being dropped off and babysat. They need to learn and engage and have programming that's rich in cultivating their mind and their civic behavior and all that good stuff. And that's what Boys and Girls Club does. And so we're excited about how we're going to be able to support the local workforce through this facility. It'll be a place where you can hold sports, you've got the walking track, as we mentioned, pickleball, outdoor playground, so on and so forth. And we'll have professional spaces for tech, dance, theater, homework help, mentoring, and it'll provide a pathway for kids to navigate life and fills in gaps in the community. So we're excited about that. With this next slide, I'm going to let Ryan take over the fundraising aspects.
Dustin gets all the fun slides.
I get all the fun slides.
So I get the money slides. So, but first of all, I want to, I want to recognize Dustin and a lot of your, and my friends in this community who are working behind the scenes just tirelessly. This Scott Urschel is our campaign chair. Karen Dills, who most of you know, is right beside myself and Scott. And I have a small staff. I have a development director, and she and I work on fundraising every day. So I do want to give you a quick update and just to remind everyone and some folks who may not know, we're having a great summer. And to show the importance of what we have as a vital youth development organization in the county, and specifically tonight to talk to you about Buna Vista, we have served over 250 different kids this summer. Thanks to Lisa, Lisi Yates, for providing our home until we get our own permanent home. Thanks to town and all of our investors. And so we're, we're continuing on at Avery Parsons Elementary and very grateful for, for the space, helping working families. I get to see Dustin's girls and so many working families' kids at the club every day. So we're open. There's lots of great organizations in town and just incredible families. But just to remind everyone, we are open 12 of the 14 weeks, summer, 45 hours a week. Nine, 8:30 to 5:30 every day. And those hours will, will continue on in our new building. But again, we are here every day. We will actually be closed next week to take a break. But Lisa asked me if we would come back early this year. So we are coming back early on August 12th, and we'll continue. And then we'll continue right through when school starts. So anyway, having a great summer. You may have heard, too, I do want to highlight some of our great local businesses. Wendell Pryor and I have been working for years. A few quick highlights, we did a free-to-all... A few quick highlights, we did a free to all of our kids, a rafting trip this summer. So Wilderness Aware, Noah's Ark, River Runners, and then also down in the canyon, Echo, ART. We all teams combined forces and they were all Boys and Girls Club kids, all got to go rafting. And we all know how the water was this summer. So it was, it was a great adventure. For us, it was, it was just a milk run, but that was the most exciting milk run in my lifetime. So great experience for the kids. We've also taken the kids fruit. So that was a free trip. Took the kids to the dinosaur museum last week in Camden City. We went to Cheyenne Mountain Zoo, took 140 kids on that field trip. So that's, that's in addition to just our day to day work every, every day. So on to the fundraising piece. We are, it's the hardest thing I've ever done in my 35 year career with Girls Club, but it's also the most inspiring thing I've ever done. We have not taken our eyes off this prize to the past as Dunk, as Dustin showed in our initial survey. As we started thinking about this in 2017 and we have been full on for the last two years. Again, led by my friend, your friend, this community's hero, Scott Erchul. And, and right alongside Karen Dills, I, I spend every day, part for most of my day thinking and asking people to invest in this program. So in this endeavor, this fundraising pyramid, the green pieces you see are how we've raised four point, just over 4.6 million dollars. Our goal is, is 10.1, just a little more than 10.1, which is an updated estimate from our builder will be DSI. We have hired DSI and John and his team are wonderful to work with. Also want to remind everyone that Abe Hackman, who works on so many great projects in this town, continues as our owner's rep and he's been invaluable and I've learned so much from Abe. So we've raised 4.6. What I'm really happy with is that it's very diverse investments. Dustin alluded to it. I mean, we started with an investment, just to remind everyone, some of the big ones, right off the bat, the county invested $500,000. Our commissioners set us on the right path, $500,000 from BB Community Health Center. And then we have a number of anonymous donors, but also over, we have over 100 individual investors. And our key now is to close this gap to get to 70% of fundraising. Dustin hears this from me all the time. We need to be on the downhill side very soon of this 10.1 goal. We are, we have permission to talk about our angel investors. Any conversation just we can allude to. I can allude to, I mean, everyone is familiar with, they're anonymous. But in terms of the archangel investors, we've had, they, we have a pending, ongoing discussions with our, our archangel investors. Many of you, I'm sure Libby remembers too, we are waiting to close this gap. Once we close this gap, we have great foundations, such as the Daniels Fund, who I've had discussions, not less than 300 and hopefully $500,000. But we've got to raise 70% of this figure in order to, to trigger that. Couple of anecdotal things which I'm really, really pleased with for our whole team. We have, I love this, but we have a climbing wall paid for, a two story climbing wall. For those of you know, some of our, a great friend who passed away last year, it's the Bob Box climbing wall. And it is entirely paid for, just to emphasize how, how overwhelming that is to me because it's, it's named after Bob. And Marilyn is a great friend of mine. Yeah, that's a $150,000 climbing wall. So it's kind of hard to imagine a climbing wall without a building, but we have a climbing wall paid for. So we just need to build the building around it. Also ongoing conversations, which I hope, I haven't given Shane the latest update, but something we're really excited about. The Color Health Foundation, some of you may know, has really become the venerable foundation in the state. And they have a long history. And I've been working with them for over a year and they provided a consultant to do most of the outside landscaping and playground piece. The ask will be submitted by the end of August. I'm looking at an ask not less than 700,000 and up to a million dollars for that outdoor space. So when you guys look out across, not only should you see a great building, but you'll see just a great community place with a play area for kids, a landscape and welcoming, Color Health Foundation really opened my eyes to even more inclusivity pieces, especially with our, with our older population in town. So that a lot of them are so, you know, selfless to say, I just want to be a place where I can spend time with my grandkids. Well, that's great, but we do need to think about how you can utilize that space and share that space with your family. So, so fingers crossed for that, but that all looks good. I'm not saying we got that money yet, but it's been a great process and I feel really good about that. So ongoing investments and Scott, Karen and I, every day are meeting with folks. And there's some great people whose, their investments are pending. I'd like to tell you now they are committed, but they're not saying no. So fingers crossed till the next two or three months. We are, as Dustin said, we have to break ground by next summer. Not only because town thankfully put those, those time limits on us. That helps me and that helps our entire team to stay focused. So that's where we are. 4.7 is not 8.7, but we are, we are heading in the right direction. And fingers crossed for a few, few great things to come through very soon. So that's our update today. Also wanted to say thank you and we, actually three, four, or five feet that we got for the gym that yes, Jane and I cannot live without. You know, I, I want to remind you how big it was then and how big it is to us now too. Some folks have asked, well, could you downsize the gym? Nope, not yet. I don't think it'll save us that much money anyway. So yeah, eyes on the prize, a gym, an entire building and an entire space the community can feel proud of.
I should add to that, that more recently is an update, part of the facility side. We've submitted our site plan and went through a comment. From the process of resubmitting back. And you know, we had a little bit of consternation and our architects and our builders were a little concerned about some of the things. And Joel was very kind to provide a meeting for us with RJ Associates and whatnot to go over some of our concerns. And then we were just a little too worried of the night, I should say. You wake up the next morning, everything's okay. So thank you, Joel, for walking us through that and hearing out our concerns and finding us good, good guidance on how to move forward on those matters. So thank you. Any questions of anyone?
Can you describe a little bit more about how the citizens of Buena Vista will be able to use the facility?
Sure. Yes, sir. Well, I can, yeah, so a lot of, I mean, a lot of MOU still to come. But this building really is a space that we serve and some of you have heard. That serve kids, you know, age four to 104. If you go over 104, we're still open to having you come in. But something that can really, and I also say, when Boys and Girls Club is out, we hope rec is in. We are a Monday through Friday organization, occasional weekends, but we are essentially expecting to be there. And also in the, just in the after school timeline during the school year. So, so the building, we hope will be a resource to the community. As many, as many mornings and as many evenings and as many weekends that town is interested, that's the partnership. So that's kind of a holistic view. Does that, is that what you're looking for, Libby?
I'm going to have more access to it than we will.
Yeah, I think percentage of time wise, we would hope that's the case. And I don't, I said, Scott and I, Karen are working awfully hard to raise the money. We definitely want to have the gym available during Boys and Girls Club hours. But it's vital a resource. We are to working families. It's more in the summer, we are opening 30 to 5:30. But during the school year, our program is open 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So those hours before and those hours after. We're also happy to work with our great partner, the town, Town Rec specifically to, we, we can be out of the gym at 6:30 too, on a lot of days. And again, we do not, we're not a weekend organization. We just don't have the capacity bandwidth and staff to be open on weekends. So, so we won't be in there on weekends at all.
Other trustee questions or staff questions? You guys good? Excited for it.
Yeah, but do, do continue to know that our investors are pillars in this community. They're people you know, they're your neighbors. And again, working families, retirees. This building is, is, has everyone's fingerprints can be on this building. But there are a lot of big things to come and I will work, you know, Philip and Joel and Shane from day one and Earl have just been the best partners we can have. But there are more grants pending and there'll be more pieces. We, we weren't successful with Hickenlooper and Bennett and Pedersen this time around. But as you know, they were supportive of other projects in the county. So we cheer those on as well. But our demographics are just not, as I've said earlier, with this building is going to be built with a majority of individual investors. We can do it.
Question on your cash. Do you have it invested at a nice interest rate or?
Yes, it's all, it's all FDIC insured or backed by the full faith and allegiance of the United States government, whatever that's worth. And so yes, it's all invested and we have it, we meet with our finance committee regularly to go over those investments to make sure that any sort of like CDs that we might be involved with. We understand our expenses and how they're coming up and that we have adequate funding for those expenses as we move forward. But then also maximizing the amount of money that we can to achieve those higher yields.
And a couple of anecdotal things, but there's a lot of great nonprofits in town. Our financial stability is, I think, unmatched. We have our board, we approved it, I should now, three years ago. We have a mandatory six months operating reserve and we have, don't tell the foundations I said this, but we have been up to 10, 11 months in terms of operating reserves. And we do have an endowment, only about 25% of Boys and Girls Clubs across the country have an endowment. And we have a very healthy, growing endowment that's doing very, very well at well over 5% on our investments. So again, we have, we've set, we've been set up well, thanks to all the support we've had from, from day one. And we'll, next year will be our 20th year anniversary. So a nice way to announce that we're, we're digging that hole and, but we will not dig a hole until, as Dustin, our finance, we have a very, we have a great, I just have amazing board members and amazing committees. We have a super strong finance committee who will not allow me to do anything until all the funding is secured.
We have all of our uses identified. We'll make sure we have all of our sources before we break ground.
Well, thanks again, everyone. Good to see everyone.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, we will move on to our business items. And we are happy to have Rich Atkins here. He's the county emergency manager. And he is a timely approach to things.
Good evening.
For the fire.
Definitely. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not me and not being able to be here a week before last. Feeling better and doing better. So I appreciate it and thanks for the invite, Brian. As you said, my name's Richard Atkins. I go by Rich. I've been in Chaffee County for the last five years. I started the week of the Decker Fire. Nice place to start. My background for some of you that don't know, I've been in public safety almost 50 years. I've been in emergency management and law enforcement most of that time. But I have about 25 years in emergency management in Oklahoma, Adams County, and then here. Most people do not understand what emergency management does. Several of you do because I remember seeing you at the training that we had several years ago. But for those of you who didn't know, basically, I'm not an emergency responder. Not in my job now. I'm a planner. I plan for the emergency preparedness for the government agencies within the county and the public. And the private businesses to make sure that we can continue. The phases of emergency management are prevention, protection, mitigation, response and recovery. I don't do all that. That's not my job. I work with the mitigation agencies within the county, envision force health council on that. But I don't work on, on how to prevent a fire. My responsibility is what do we do after the fire starts? How do we communicate with the public on our alert and warning systems? How do we evacuate? You know, how do we get people out? Where do we send them? How do we shelter them? You know, and so on the mitigation there, the response, I also manned the train people to operate the emergency operations center. You know, yeah, we do have a facility. It's by the landfill. Terrible facility in reference to, it's a great building. You know, thank you for the BB schools that provided it several years ago. But the infrastructure is not there. So when we do an evacuation, when we do set up an EOC, I'm going to be either in Salida or in BB, setting it up based on where the incident occurs. Basically, what the EOC does is just handle situation awareness, pushing the information out to the public as much as possible. Resource ordering for all those in, incident required resources that the comm center can't handle. You know, and public information, mask care, those consequence management things like shelters, setting up shelters. So we have people that are trained to do that. So during our last fire, that never came into Chaffee County, thank goodness. We were already planning on it, how we, in the area that we were evacuating, where we're going to bring people to. And then we're bringing them here to Chaffee, or to Buena Vista. Working with our partners, you know, whether it's here, whether it's at the airport, whether it's at some of the churches. We have multiple shelter locations that we can do. And we have people that are trained and we're training more to be able to set those up. We've had several fires in the past, especially one where I did get a lot of help. Even though we didn't have to shelter anybody. And when I talk about shelter, I'm not talking about overnight. We're talking about an evacuation center. We're talking about a warming shelter. We're talking about a needs assessment location. Very, like I said, I've been in this business for quite a while. I have only set up a couple overnight shelters. And that was up in Adams County during the cyclone blizzard in 2019, where we had to shelter about 800 people. We didn't bring out cots. We didn't bring out that to stuff. They just needed to get inside to stay warm. But that's what we do. And then I also do recovery. I assist with, with the municipalities, with the different agencies to do individual assistance from the federal government, public assistance when we meet that threshold. And also small businesses, loans type stuff where we can come in and do, help get that contact with the feds to provide those low interest loans. That's what I do. I do plan. I plan to help people prepare. Lately, I've been doing a lot of preparedness classes to some of our residents and different HOAs, getting them ready to. Lately, I've been doing a lot of preparedness classes to some of our residents and different HOAs, getting them ready to how to prepare. How to look at what needs do they have, you know, how to make a plan, you know, how to do a communications plan. You know, with their families, friends, and then how to exercise that plan. So that's what I do. On the recovery side, just going back a little bit. First of all, I'm not the county only emergency manager. I'm yours. Based on state law, unless you've designated an emergency management department for your municipality, I'm responsible for you. You know, when I was in Adams County, you know, I have 12 emergency managers from the municipalities. Here in Chaffee County, I'm it. Yes, I do have a few like, heart of the Rockies has a part-time emergency manager. And some others have some emergency management roles, but aren't, they don't have the full requirements. I do the communications with the state, state DOC to bring in resources and stuff, but I'm yours. So when you have needs, definitely reach out. Training, exercising, I work with your, your police department heavily with the county fire department that serves you. I work with all those agencies to try to get us ready for the next disaster. Part of that is the planning. During the last year, we've done some great things. It takes, it took me six months to update the emergency operation plan for the county. It's updated. It's public facing. So if you haven't ever seen one, go onto the county website, go to the emergency management page. On the left-hand side, you'll see the county's emergency operation plan. Little boring. It's about 80 some pages, but it, it talks about the responsibilities. Who has what responsibility, who, you know, during a disaster, you know, what, what responsibilities does the municipalities have? What responsibilities does the police department, the fire departments have? So definitely do that. But one of the biggest things of my responsibility is to educate you. Educate the elected officials so that they understand what their role is during a disaster. We did that a couple of years ago. We're going to have some more of those coming up that I want to make sure that you're, you're aware of. So you can understand during, you know, what is a emergency declaration? You know, who talk, who does the communication with the state to bring in resources? Who pays for them? You know, depending on that. So that's where I come in. Some of the other things that I do is just attend a lot of meetings. I try to be available to the public and to the different municipalities to answer your questions. So a lot of times you don't see me in here, but I'm online. You know, I'm trying to find out what is important to you, what issues are you experiencing? And then finally, one of the biggest, most important things that I do is the hazard and risk mitigation studies. We do that almost every year. We're doing another update coming up so we can look at what hazards do we need to plan for? You know, and we definitely want your, your opinions, your input and how we do that. The last five years that I've been here, you know, wildfire is number one because it has the greatest impact. Another one is flooding, you know, and then winter weather type stuff and so. But anytime we do the update, we're pushing out requests for information from you to find out what is important to you. What do you see? Any questions?
Trustees, anything?
When you said that possible training exercise for trustees soonish, what do you have kind of anticipated like next couple of months, next few?
We just got a brand new regional field manager from the state, so I'm having to train him on quite a few things. He's never been an emergency manager. So he's the partner with me when we do this training. So it'll probably be early spring. But if you have any questions and stuff, I will be pushing several documents to Brian on some of your roles and responsibilities. So he can push it out to you, including, you know, elected officials' responsibility that FEMA puts out. Lot of word, a lot of verbiage, you know, but basically it gives you a lot of the responsibilities that you need to start to learn about. But I'm available anytime. And I can tell you, I was definitely watching for your, your benefit while I was up at the fire. I was there for about a week and a half and had some great firefighters that were up there from all over, working that fire. A lot of smart people on how to manage that fire. So I know that there was some, some anxiety out there, but I can tell you, we're, we're trained to, to do these things. And I will be the first to reach out to you to let you know if you're, if we're looking at any hazards to the, to the town. But I definitely want to work more with the town, especially volunteer staff to work the shelters and stuff.
With regard to the shelters, you were making the point that the fire never entered Chaffee County. But could we have been sheltering people who were evacuated from north of Chaffee County? Would that happen?
It could have, and that's what we were planning for. All of those pre-evacuation areas, we had a lot of campers are out there. But a lot of those, we were just, we would be putting them into other camping areas. But the residents were not threatened up there. Could it have? Yes, and we tried to plan on it. We did a exercise with Lake County with a fire just south of Fair Play. Exercise and Alma and the location that, that they decided on, if they had to evacuate, where would they come is right here, the BV. So we're in the planning process with them to try to, how does that work? You know, working out an MOU, especially for financial agreements, who's paying for what? Because remember, the feds don't come in here and pay for everything unless you're a big one. You know, you have to meet a certain threshold before we can get any federal funds. We can get some state funds if they're available. A lot of times they run out of money before the next fiscal year on some of these. So, but yeah, there are, there are chances that we could shelter people here from other areas. But we would definitely work with you on that.
Yeah, that fire, you know, the interlock and fire apparently was over $5 million of cost. You know, for 780 acre fire.
Part of that is.
Up there really quickly.
Part of that is the, what it costs to bring the team in to work. Every one of those firefighters after the first 72 hours are being paid. Plus, there's a amount of resources that come in to support them. So if we had like in Decker, we were at about 1.5 to $2 million a day for that team to be here. When it was over 1,000 firefighters, plus the support staff to do it. That's where a lot of that funding comes in, plus the aircraft. When they talk about how much your cost, you know, they're throwing all of that in. And we did a lot of air tanker drops, either retardant or water on that fire. So and plus, you definitely know about the helicopters that were here. They were stationed here at the airport, supporting them. So, yeah, you had three on the fire. You had three here standing by, ready to go. So that's where the cost is and it gets very expensive. But thank goodness, most of that is interagency since it was forest service land and we didn't have to. Anything that we provided, Lake County provided, they were, they're being reimbursed for. Decker Fire, the same thing. We did a lot of the consequence management roadblocks, some of our resources and stuff, we got reimbursed for.
Yeah, um, I remember your training from a couple of years back, which was great. And so I'm with search and rescue north and.
Excellent group. Thank you.
Well, yes, they're a great group and proud to be there with them. But some of our requirements for joining is to take the IS-100C and so IS-700B, the FEMA courses. And it's just an introduction to kind of like that incident command system if something happens. And I was going to say, I don't think as trustees or part of town, we're required to do anything like that. But I wonder if taking something like that would be helpful in general. And I don't mean that's a bigger discussion, but it kind of introduces you to a little bit of the line of work that you do and how to, you know, understand or respond in a certain way within parameters. But those were helpful courses that took a while ago now. But if there are, if there are big issues like you're saying, you know, or emergencies, I don't know, it gives you a little bit more insight instead of trying to scramble and anyhow. But I was curious your thoughts of, do you think that would be something that would be useful or helpful for?
Definitely. I started teaching ICS back in 2000 before the 100, 200, 300. And 2005, we started teaching the 100, which is just intro. And then 200, which is a little bit more, and then 300, which is an intermediate. Which supervisors and stuff on the emergency incident management teams are taking, and then 400, which is, I'm not sure who really needs to take that course. But about 2015, they switched it to the 100, 200, 700, 800 are all online.
Right.
But I find that, and I still teach some of the 100, 200 classes. Because you learn more in a classroom setting than you do sitting in front of a computer trying to pass a test. So I definitely do those courses. So this, I'll make sure Brian gets the information when I do post it. I'm doing one for public health either next month or early September. So I'll definitely let you know. Cause I get that a lot, that they want to do that. So if you have enough people, let me know and I'll come teach because I can usually do a 100 course in about four hours. The reason why we don't do it to public officials and stuff, we just have a course called 402. The problem is, yeah, it teaches you a lot about ICS, but what do you really need for ICS? You know, that's not your, you're not going to be on a team to know who the incident commander is, who, you need to know, you know, how to do delegation to the authority. How to do emergency declarations, how to figure out if you're going to pay for it or you're going to get, try to get somebody else to pay for it. Cause every response requires somebody to pay for it.
I had to take those online classes to be able to sit here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Almost all of our existing staff have taken probably at least five ICS courses and the board up to a certain point.
Okay.
They've changed a lot of the requirements over the last 10 years or so because they were finding out that a straight leg firefighter that just puts water on the fire doesn't need to have those 300, 400 courses that get into how to design and operation response and stuff like that. So, but it's always good. I'm all for everyone to getting 100 and 700.
Yeah, I just figured it was worth asking and I didn't, like you said, I couldn't remember when I started if that was a thing by taking with SAR, but anyhow.
Yeah, we used to, everyone used to have to have it, what, you know, the work for government. Even the person that does scorekeeping, you know, at a, at a ballgame, you know, we used to have to make sure to be NIMs compliant. The agency to be able to receive federal funds pre or post disaster had to have, have that. But we don't, they've relaxed that quite a bit because it was really a waste. Cause they never used it, especially the 300, 400 courses. Well, thank you very much and I'm always available for you. You have any questions, let me know. And I'll definitely make sure. I apologize for not communicating more during that fire. But we were pushing out a lot of information, but if you have any questions about those things, just give me a call. I definitely will let you know. And if it didn't look like it was going to make a run or anything, I would have definitely alerted Brian. And put some of the plans in place. And some of the plans that we're working on heavily is evacuations. You know, how to, how to do that and get people out and the alert and warning plans. Those are our priorities for this next couple of quarters. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to now have a public hearing, which has to do with temporary seasonal camping into the highway commercial zone district. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. And Joel, I think that you're probably the applicant, so to speak.
So to speak, yeah, thank you. And trustees, as you recall, this is technically a continued hearing from July the 9th. We opened and closed after continuing, continuing the hearing. We were not in a position to review it. And so since then, we met with the planning zoning commission. That would have been the second public hearing there and this would be really the third public hearing, including July the 9th to review this. Thank you. So, so again, this is, this was brought before the board of trustees or planning zoning commission about a year and a half ago originally. At the direction, as I understand it, of the board, but definitely planning and zoning. It's staff right forward to P and Z to, I think, I wasn't on staff at the time, but partly because of public comments saying, hey, we want camping in, not only in the light industrial where it's allowed now, but also the hyper commercial. And so what does that look like? And so we, it went to planning zoning commission, also a public hearing. Was presented with really basically adding hyper commercial as an allowed use. And allowed use in that zone district and largely keeping the remainder of the existing code. And planning zoning commission said at the time, actually, there's a lot more in here. We would like to fix for life safety and health and the neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. And so at that time, staff transitioned. And so we picked it up kind of in the fall, although there was a lot of transition then and then really just in all the last couple of few months here. And so we got the input directly from the commission. From their concerns with the existing code and then we amplified the existing code to express their concerns. We met with fire department, code enforcement, police chief, et cetera. Okay. And so this is what this product is. This is, you know, the idea is to provide some alternative for. You know, the idea is to uh, provide some alternative for housing, for, you know. Temporary housing for employees. This in no way is a solution to any kind of housing issue. There's, it's a very small Band-Aid on the. A big issue, but this is uh, an option. Okay, so. Um, with that, uh, I'll go through the specific changes to existing code. There was one um. One thing that I overlooked in your, in your reports, I'll have to go through that. Um, and. This is a reflection of planning zoning commission discussion. It was only last Wednesday. I don't have approved minutes, so. Um, i- if the board wants to continue the hearing until we get those approved minutes, perfectly fine with that, or. Proved deny, approved amendments or whatever. It's okay. Um. There were most, all of the public, almost all of it is either detailed in your staff memo or is reflected within this. We also received uh, some public comment um. Uh, on the email, I think as late as this afternoon. Uh, talking specifically about uh, concern about like basically setbacks or keeping some distance between camping and the neighbor property. So that's something we can touch on. So. We're gonna go through the specific changes and um, they're all within your staff report. You would have seen. Black font was. What exists and then orange font is addition, except I have one change on that. So. So specific changes, basically, we added um. Highway commercial throughout the text. Okay, we changed the duration. There was a, a fixed time from April one to September thirtieth. And that was desired to have it an option anyway for year round. Likely that won't take place. Um, if that is, it has to be through a review process through the actual site plan review with winterization, um, et cetera. So we changed the title, we removed the dates, we removed the words seasonal throughout, because there's a, it's just really temporary camping. Again. Looked like the two, two wrapping companies use it now and everyone goes home, right? So. Um, we changed, added a purpose intent content within that to include a potential for year round and. Also to state that this is not a vested right. So it's subject to an annual renewal and just because. Contemplates it in the code doesn't mean you would get that, you know, if you, if you don't follow the rules or. Um, the site plan isn't good enough, or we say, yeah, we don't wanna have this anymore and we remove this as even an option. So it's not like a use by right as many, many uses by right would be for that property. So this is specifically, this is not a vested right for your property. We had it, so some description on what a toilet facility is and what the access is. Um, we specified you have to draw from town's distribution systems. There's cleanliness and, you know, we know with the. The potability of the water. Um, and electrical hookups have to be inspected by the chief of county. So it's not just a two hundred foot extension cord kind of a deal. More, Brian? Um, we added some, uh, required some additional details to the site plan. And this is kind of a good uh, place that this comment on uh, maybe an additional setback. Um, could fit within that. It's pretty easy if you guys wanna amend that.
Joel, can I ask a question as you probably?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but the toilet facilities, can they be within the building of the employer?
Oh, yeah.
They don't have to be outside in the campground.
But we added that with twenty-four hour access. So as long as there's access to it.
Okay.
Yeah. We did add a restriction, um, that camping cannot occur within two hundred feet of the center line of highway twenty-four. Um, which is um, which points out one part of the code. Within uh, gosh, it's in this little um, letter I in your packet. Um, it's about camping should not occur within two hundred fifty feet of highway twenty-four is measured from the center line. And language that was in there that we pulled out and I didn't notify, but exists in the current code. It says that the camping. Um, shall may be permitted on parcels with an existing primary structure and must be located behind the primary structure of the building. So that's currently in there right now. Planning zoning said, let's pull that out. And, and Brian and I were talking just today, there, there might be. You know, thinking about like behind the primary facade, maybe just so it's not. Right now you can camp right in the front. On the, you know, as it's contemplated, so.
That's tacky.
Yeah, so you might, I, I did not, I, I failed to point out that, hey, this was removed from the existing code. Mostly just like let people, you know, figure it out, but there might be some.
What's the logic for two hundred and fifty feet?
Uh, keep it just clean. And so you're not driving down the highway and seeing campers and, you know, parking lots and screening, because these would, you know, involve fencing and things like that. I think most places wouldn't put um, camping out front, because they want, you wanna see the business.
Right.
But anyway.
So the two hundred and fifty foot setback from the center lane. So really how far off that is that off from the highway? Because. We did creative measuring when we did liquor licenses for the stuff by the school. Cause you had to walk down the sidewalk and across the street and that counted. So I wonder about. How far setback two hundred and fifty feet would be.
We do, uh, there's a map right there. Um, so that orange there.
That's the two hundred and fifty.
That shows the two hundred and fifty feet. Yeah, so you can see um. You know, like. Most of the businesses to the south, certainly. Um, a little further north, it gets possible.
So for, for reference there, that the gravel parking lot, south of city market. That nearly that entire parking lot is within two fifty, two hundred and fifty feet. Is that right? That's, that should be right there to the left of the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. Yeah, nearly the entire park.
So just for, just for perspective, that entire parking lot would be excluded.
Alright. So there, there's a. Only so many spots. Uh, of course, that parcel to the east, southeast. Entire thing would be, that's the only restriction right now is that two hundred and fifty feet.
The red at the, the bottom, um, that's that rafting place.
No, that's, cause that's an, that's an industrial, so which is just south of that red. That red was at um. The one we saw. One hundred and fifty Greg circle that we um, had a zoning.
There's some, there's some little spot somewhere where you can have an adult bookstore.
That's in the uh, A C D gravel. Really? It is.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Brian, can you go back up one more? So we also added the uh, just the requirement, the statement that this is a minor site plan review. Um, and created the title in there that these are specific criteria for review, because it wasn't, it was really ambiguous as to. What constitutes approval or not. So we added some criteria for review for the minor site plan. And we also add that it has to be through a public, this first, first year's approval has to be through a public process. So it's a notified public hearing for planning zoning commission for review. Um, there's a recommendation provided to the town administrator. And this is after also getting um, approval from referral agencies, fire in particular. But also public works for like backflow preventers or something.
I want to clarify that there is. No tent camping, camping out of your cars. This is. Travel trailers, motor coaches that they're going to be staying.
There's no, nothing in here that distinguishes.
Yeah, it'd be nice to define camping.
I don't wanna see tents along our business highway. Yeah. Or car camping.
Sure. Be nice to have a definition of what camping, what we envision camping is and to your point, what you envision as. Not acceptable camping.
Yeah.
Um, we also have uh, so the first process is just a formal review process. And then there's a recommendation and an annual renewal. Permanent process after that. So much easier process and so, so someone like the wrapping company can just come in and there's permanent, yeah, you're good. Nothing changed, so. We've got Mika online with a question. Yeah, Mika has a question.
Thank you. Um, with the two hundred and fifty foot setback. How many of the businesses that requested this would be excluded from the opportunity for a minor use permit?
The, there's one business that I know of that was talking about this last spring. Um, specifically, and I don't know if there were others, and that business um. Is on the east side, so not near the highway.
Okay. If there is a business within the two hundred and fifty feet that wanted to utilize this. Could they request a variance from the two hundred and fifty feet requirement in the minor site plan review process?
Um, the way the code is written now, it prohibits that two hundred and fifty feet and there's not a variance process contemplated.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's um. Um, those are the specific changes. Brian just showed that map. Go down, Brian, do that. That, and then again, so um, anyway, so that's. In a nut, in a nutshell, there's a lot of changes in here and accommodate the highway commercial, but then there's some additional changes that um. Came from the planning is on a mission trying to improve that. And after discussions with um, police and fire, et cetera. So um. With that, I, you know, open it up, I guess public comment would be next. But then um, if you all have questions and. You look to approve or approve with amendments or deny or. Um, continue it to some other, either date certain or just in the future, give us more research and it's really not um. You know, I think there's some, probably some, some good justified changes in here, but it's also from kind of a residual conversation from. At least a year and a half ago, so. So we'll do whatever you want.
Well, I know that you guys might wanna discuss, but I would like to make a motion. To continue the hearing. I would like to hear what planning and zoning recommended. I would like to see something in there that would prevent tent camping and car camping. We're building how many units down there for workforce people to live in an apartment? Um, we are a town that frowns and does not allow. Trailer parks, but we could allow tent parking or car parking. That's no different than. Having a camper in front of somebody's house. I want more teeth in it to prevent. Stuff. I want more sanitation types stuff. Um, I. Think that over time, that could be a health hazard, not. The tent camping and the, the whatever. But anyway, I would like to make a motion to. Um, continue the hearing after we have the opportunity to. Hear from what planning and zoning recommended and from there I would probably make amendments to it.
Before we have a second to that, um, could we go ahead and hear from the public? If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Mika's got her hand up.
Yeah, I have questions too before. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I would like to have some questions answered first. For more information before, just to have a better understanding of background um, before going into the motion for continuance.
Is that okay with you?
Sure. So just before everything, I'm like, wait, over here.
So um, are you ready to go or should we have Mika?
Oh, well, if I can ask questions now, I didn't know if you had to do the public hearing first.
Comment.
Yeah, if there's no.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Nobody online.
Okay, okay. Then uh, I'll cause the public comment. And the trustees may ask questions.
Okay, so um, I have a couple of questions. So uh, first. Deals with um. How long would the timeline be before um, a permit could be provided? If you could ballpark, because it seems like a pretty lengthy process. I'm just wondering how long is that realistically? Um, I know there's things that can make it varied, but. Like how hard will it be for them to actually get a permit here or how long will that take?
Well, the, the process right now, you need uh. You know, water waste facilities, water screening in particular. Um, and so, you know, it depends on if you have a fence or not, you know, whether or not you need to build that fence. But the process, it's a minor sub, minor. Site plan review is all internal except for the referral. We need to give a couple of weeks for referral. Uh, agencies to respond, which we also need in a public hearing, we need to post. Um, through the newspaper, probably at least three weeks. Ahead of, you know, scheduled three weeks out because of the newspaper. So um, a week to review. So it could take easy, easy month.
So easily in one timeframe, just okay.
And that's for the first year and the second, you know, ongoing years would take less time, but there's. You know, it depends on what's going on, but you have to be um. You have to wanna do it.
Sure.
It's not like a haphazard, uh, let me, let's start camping next week kind of thing.
Right. No, I, I understand that. I just, it's like, it's like a, you know, sixty day, ninety day type turnaround. I know we get busy and think, you know, so like, what's realistic? So people can potentially think about, okay, how long do I have to plan? Um, another question, um, I don't believe there is one currently, but I'll ask anyway. Is there a cap as to how many campers per business?
There's one contemplated, but there's no cap existing. Um, and there was a. Public comment request and then planning zoning also support that. That um, it's not restricted.
Okay, so nor restricted. Okay, um. And then um. I guess we kind of talked a little bit about the setbacks, potentially with that comment that was emailed to us. I was curious if that was discussed at P and Z. I know the minutes aren't finalized yet, so um, was that something that they discussed and were like, hey, you know, you know. The two fifty is good enough. Here's the reasons why we aren't gonna put that in there or. Um, I just, you know, because there's no minutes yet. I don't know if that was touched upon or.
Yeah, there's, it was not discussed specific to setbacks, but fire, um, I mean wooden fence, you can't have a. Fire code prevents at least a five foot, would mandate at least a five foot setback.
Okay.
Camping there would, wooden things.
Okay.
But that wasn't, wasn't discussed. Um, and setbacks, it had, it would have to be specific to this, because the, you know. And language about camping or tents or trailers or whatever. Cause the, the town municipal code contemplate setbacks for structures. You know, and eaves and things, parts of, parts of buildings, but not for some of this insularity.
Mark, some of the setbacks involving with egress and access.
There is, yeah, that's part of the fire department. Um, there's ingress, egress, the fire department's gonna want, um. I think at least twenty feet ingress, egress.
And that'll be part of your site plan review.
Correct. Sorry, Gina.
Well, that's okay. And then my last question, and thank you for, figure if I just say all of them. Be through your hair here. Um. And then just wondering, I mean, I know the republic here is the P and Z, but do we do any um, reach out to those residential communities that are kind of. Located right behind the highway commercial industrial businesses, just to see what their thoughts were. Um, with the mindset of just, you know, everybody's a stakeholder and trying to be collaborative on what, what people feel like, you know, if somebody's trying to sell their house and. You know, all of a sudden now they're, you know, this is happening, you know, there's a business and there's, could be, I don't know, ten tents. I know that's whatever extreme, but. Just any reach, um, any outreach to the local folks in those areas. If we've done that or if there's a way to do that, just so everybody. If we've done that or if there's a way to do that, just so everybody feels like they've had an opportunity to share their thoughts.
Sure, you know, most, most of the code, code updates follow the standard. You know, procedures outline municipal code with the. Notice, notification and, you know, the newspaper and it's posted online and things that. That specific outreach. We, it's, it's not normal practice, especially because it's. Pretty broad scope and a pretty broad, you know, timeline. So any kind of code change we do would just extend the. You know, the review process, but we're happy to work on that as well. It'd be mailers, you know, you'd have to send it out to mailers if you wanted to, you know, own in on everybody, which.
No, that's fine. I just, I said, I just wanna check in and see some thoughts there and. That helps me understand a little bit better for potentially. Doing a deeper dive and having more time to kind of really consider different things. But I do agree with what you had said earlier, that this is. This would be a minor band aid to help for the time being. This is not a long-term plan as that would be really scary for us if it was, and so. So I think there's some merit here, but I would love to. Consider and think and. You know, maybe reshape, reframe, depending on what everybody else has to say. So anyhow, thank you for fielding my questions.
Mika, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, in response to Gina reaching out to the public. I think we've done that already and I wanna remind folks that you still have to go through a minor use process that requires a public hearing. I would move to. Approve this tonight. You know, it's a pretty extensive. And difficult process to work through anyway. I think we've heard over and over and over again from commercial businesses in town that. Housing is an issue and yes, we're building things, but those are supposed to be long-term housing, not seasonal. Housing for workers, which continues to be a problem in the county and in town. The county took up a similar issue to this in two thousand and twenty-one that moved forward with positive impact, but, but generally. Even if we build affordable housing units, they're not necessarily going to be available for. Four to eight weeks at a time in the summer and the alternative to passing something like this is we just allow. Workers to live on public lands, which. Has bad impacts on the environment. They have less sanitary. You know, support, they have less fire restrictions. And I think we need to be responsible for. The workers we bring into this town that make this town function. So, you know, I do this type of work for a living. It has zero impact on this. This is very different and like it wouldn't necessarily benefit my business, but. But generally, I think this is a really good policy and I'd caution us about being too restrictive regarding setbacks and things like that. Because it is a minor use plan and there's not a really good one size fits all answer, but because we're gonna talk about. Site plans, there'd be a public hearing, it has to be reviewed by. Public Works and Fire. I think all those issues can be dealt with. On a case by case basis, and if we don't like it, we can deny it, right? As a, as. Well, the administration could. So, you know, I think that's important. Keep in mind that every property looks different. There will be a chance for public input on those individual site plans, and I can't imagine this will be a super popular use, but. You know, I disagree respectfully with Cindy. I don't mind. Tents, RVs, campers, things like that. We actually have them all the time in town for. Events in the South Main parking lot, you know, they're parked and camped along the river trail all the time. I think allowing commercial businesses to use their space to host. Workers is a totally reasonable, short-term. Stopgap solution when we don't have any other long-term solutions. And I think. The amendments written into this are reasonable and, and quite restrictive in comparison to other ones I've seen, so. I would actually just move to approve this tonight, and if we. Go through a couple of public hearings and don't like the results, we can change it, but I think. It's worth giving something like this a try and seeing how it goes instead of denying it. Outright or making it so restrictive that it doesn't actually work for anybody.
Jeff, I might need your help on this, but I think we already have a motion on the table that I have requested that we be able to continue our discussions without. Without voting on that motion.
Yeah, so.
Take another motion.
Yeah, I see. So you deal with the first motion first and depending on what happens with that, then you can take up. Trustee Rosenor's motion.
But can we continue our discussions without? Either, without looking at either motion right now?
Yeah, I, I think that that's the better approach, because we don't even, did we get a second for the first motion even?
And I, I wanna make clear, I wasn't making the motion. I'd say I, I would make a motion to.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I would like to continue our discussions first. So. I would like to know whether the staff has been asked to inquire with other cities, other mountain towns as to what they're doing. Because I know like over in Dillon, they have parking lots, church parking lots, let's say, where you can. You can actually stay in your car. I'm not, not you, but an employee can. Live in their car basically, and they have to, they can be there five days. Then that parking lot is closed and they have to go some, to some other parking lot. But I don't know if we've made any inquiries with other communities.
We looked at. Crested views in particular to see if we could model after, after that, and it was, it was pretty loose as far as like. Where you could camp, which was. Throughout the town, you know, and so we looked at that and we had a good discussion on that. And as far as, I mean, we heard pretty clearly the desire to put this in highway commercial. And make these changes. And so we focused on that. We, we also. You know, we, a couple of years ago, we had looked at camping out of rodeo grounds and, you know, different options like that, but. The specific ask was really, let's have. Businesses be able to house their employees on their, on their properties. So, and, and that's.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what we had, we had focused. We have not had. Done research on other camping ordinance.
And we could make it more restrictive. You know, like in terms of the type of camping vehicle or, or setbacks or caps on the number of. You know, the number of employees who can park, who can be camping at a given time. So we would be able to admit, you know, put this, put some more teeth into it, I guess, is what I'd be saying.
You do, yeah, I think there's a balance, like I think it was saying on. How many people are gonna use it? You know, if you make too restrictive. Don't wanna use it. But make it restricted enough so that it's, you know, protects the citizenry.
Are there other trustee questions before?
I do have a view. You're talking about the current language saying it must be located behind the building. So it's kept out of public view and I wonder if four A doesn't. Apply to that, to where we wouldn't be able to see whatever camping area they so choose to use. Because it states screening sufficient to block the camping area from view of neighboring properties and public property at street level. So regardless of where they decide to do it on their business property, I feel like that's a pretty good protection. That whether it's tent camping or car camping or in a trailer, we're not supposed to be seeing any of it, right? That's the intent behind that.
Yeah, that's the intent. I think the. And I don't think, again, I don't think many people would camp out in front of their place, you know. But you do run that risk of having six-foot fence.
Blocking a business essentially, right?
Your business and there's some, you know, some fence materials that some zone districts, some areas I don't remember for having a commercial, but you need that visible. To, you know, top two feet needs to be visible, transparent fence and so.
So that does add a little bit of protection to what this looks like in theory.
And, and some trailers would always be, they'll pop in over a six-foot fence.
And I also agree with the reach out to the community that would be affected. But my, my brain kind of thought of it more so like we do with the liquor permitting. That is part of that process. You have to go survey your neighbors, which is a defined boundary to ask whether or not, you know, they support. That, that application, that permit application. And I wonder if we couldn't look to add something like that into the application. That would ensure that their immediate neighboring community. Supports additional camping. I don't know if that's allowed, if it's. Something that we could do, but something that I think would be worth exploring. Again, to protect the community value, I do very much see the need for this and. Working, you know, in some of these industries. Knowing people, you know, it's really hard to find a place, so they are on public things right now. And businesses do need it. It does make it easier for some of those businesses to half-stop throughout their busiest time. And so I do see it, but I also absolutely understand. The concern for what it looks like, for what our town looks like as you drive through it, as you spend time in it, as you live in it, so. I, again, don't wanna restrict it to the point where nobody can benefit from it. But think maybe adding in something for a public survey of each application. And, and maybe strengthening the language for sufficient screening to help pretend. And that way, maybe we don't have to define camping, but more so define the protection of. The facade of that business. Does that make sense?
Still think there needs to be a cap. I'm not that far from Brown's campground. And many summer nights, we end up closing our windows so we can sleep. And it, it does affect the surrounding residents. And I do think there needs to be a cap and without being the. Nasty old lady that calls the police department three times a week. I, people that drive by there should hear the noise level and they should know that they're being loud. I mean, I, I mean, I, because I don't wanna be the person that calls in. Over and over and over again, but, but in their group camping, it can be noisy. I do think there needs to be a cap limit, whether it's. So many for the area of ground that they're designating or whatever, but I. I cannot approve it. I'm, I can't. Vote for it and I can be easily outvoted, that's okay, but I can't vote for it the way it is. I want. To know what planning and zoning said.
That's reasonable to wait for their minutes. It seems to me. That you could have a cap on the number of. Employees who could be there more easily than you could say that you would. That you're required to have a camping trailer or, or, you know, RV of some type. Because I think those are so expensive that, you know, these workers are not. Gonna be able to go out and buy one of those.
Our unified development code. You really shouldn't camp out in your own backyard in a tent with. Your kids. You're only allowed to do it so many days, so many. So many times without having a special permit. There's homeless people that are. Living places and we kick them around and we do not allow them to stay where they've been. But just because it's a business, they can do what they want. I, I think our code is kind of conflicted.
Enter.
I do, I have a couple of questions. I think at the outset, I think I'm, I am in. Favor of this concept and I think it'd be nice to make sure we had more clarity to ensure, to ensure that all the. The definitions and the expectations are the same. So I do think it'd be nice to have some definition of what we mean by camping. Whether it's a tent or a camper, but what we, what I think we don't wanna have is someone to go steal two. Carts from City Market and put a tarp between the two of them and sleep underneath them. You know, we're looking for something that would provide a reasonable privacy and reasonable protection from the elements. So I don't know, I do think a. A definition of what camping is would be helpful, so that when you see it or, you know, code enforcement or whoever sees it, it's just, no. We did not envision someone just. Sleeping under a tarp on the, on the, you know, on the parking lot. Number two, I also think we ought to have a, a definition of what is acceptable screening. I mean, the, the intent is not to just. Stretch a tarp between two dumpsters and call that a screen, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's an aesthetically acceptable screening. So some definition there. A question, when you do the annual renewals. Is there a mechanism for, to get feedback from the referral agencies?
There, I mean, we're, we haven't created that application process yet.
But it'd be neat, like annually, you know, get feedback from law enforcement and public works. Did law enforcement have, you know, we had fifteen calls there this last summer. It's a real problem. Or law enforcement says, you know, they did great. You know, we need to see if that feedback mechanism. On a routine basis, you've still gotta get this signed off in original referral agencies, maybe not as in-depth, but that they would authorize doing that. And could we have, could we consider having a CPW as a referral agency just? From all the stuff that attracts bears and wildlife in, in town? If, you know, if, if we're getting that nuisance attraction to, you know, the graham crackers and whatnot in the tent. I would like for us to have a mechanism to ensure that CPW would have at least the, we could at least ask them, is this. Creating a problem for wildlife or not? I do think the setbacks, for a number of reasons, you know, the site plan would show some ingress and egress from a public health and emergency standpoint. If you get people so packed in, you got ten, ten, ten tents deep next to a fence. And someone in the back has a medical emergency, you can't get in and out of it with one or ten. So I think some. Now, that doesn't need to be at our level, but somewhere in the site plan, you guys are looking at egress and access. I do agree with Cindy saying it'd be nice to see that meeting minutes from. Planning and zoning, since this is the first time before this board, I think from a due diligence standpoint, we would be. We'd be remiss to approve something with them knowing that public comment is coming before us later on an issue we've already approved, so. I do think it would be prudent to at least receive that comment. And then I had a couple of questions on the, the wording of the ordinance. You mentioned the setbacks are not in there, but they could be included to be in an amendment. Yeah, so maybe in our next turn of the crank before, if, if we're, if we were to continue this, we would have opportunity to see another version of this. With the setback in there. If we were to do that. On page eighty-six. The item one, I think you could pull that up, Brian. In the orange font and item one. About the. Middleway through that where it says, therefore, there is no intent to create a vested right to camp. I wonder if we could say, therefore, there is no vested right to camp. It's a little stronger, Sam. It's not, and it says that there is no vested right to camp.
Jeff, is that?
Yeah, that, that's absolutely fine. You know, I mean, that's fine. As a note, the, the notice, the, the whole, this whole section is a purpose and intent, so. It has that kind of intent and purpose language in it. But that's totally fine. And then item three, where it says camping is available only. Camping is available only for employees. Scroll down there, Brian. Wonder if we could say camping is permitted only for employees? That's a better, that's an improvement.
What about families? Like suppose somebody is married or unmarried, they have a partner. What if they have a child? You know, I mean.
I think we should, we have flexibility to that, but if, if, you know, if I'm working here and I got six buddies from Denver that wanna come crash for me for the weekend, that's it. That's different.
Right, or my brother or my fifth cousin wants to move.
Yeah, so I think make, make an allowance for the, the employees and their dependents or family members. I think that's our intent is to support the employees. The intent is not to support a party.
Right.
And we did, we did discuss that, Plankton did. And. It started getting, you know, like, what about schools? And what about the impact fees? And, I mean, it sort of go down some rabbit holes and so it's like, well, let's just keep it.
But the intent is to support the, to support the business and the employees and their families. I think that's the intent that we could all agree on. And then just another question about a referral agency from a. Would we consider getting some input from public health as an ongoing referral agency that they would. At least look at it saying that there, there's no public health risk here with the way this camping is being administered from a. with the way this camping is being administered from a cleanly medicine sanitation perspective? And again, I'm not trying to make this more restrictive. I just would like to make sure we we have things really, really clear because, you know, three or four years down the road and two boards removed and three business owners later. And, you know, things just, things just morph. And so again, I'm not, not intending to make it more restrictive. I'm not opposed to it. I just would like to make sure we have real good clarity for those who come after us. So yeah, that was all my.
Do we all pretty much feel that we want to see the planning and zoning minutes?
I would appreciate it.
I think I'd like to see.
I think it would be prudent.
OK, given that, we can carry on this discussion, which is fine. But I think that we should be not looking to approve this or approve it with amendments tonight because we don't have those minutes. And I think that they, we, we look to planning and zoning for their advice.
Mika's got her hand up again.
Make out, please, go ahead.
I think that's fine, Mayor. I was just going to say that CPW was asked to be a consulting agency when the county did this and basically said, we don't have the staff to do that. So I think if you want to ask Public Works or the Police Department, whoever would get a local call about a bear or something, you know, you, maybe you'd want to ask them. But I think CPW doesn't necessarily have the resources nor the reporting to know if there's an impact like that in this type of highway commercial, you know, in town use. They they wouldn't necessarily know that information. So you could ask them, but I wouldn't want to require them to give feedback.
I think with, I mean, the referral agency, you can ask, you may not get any feedback. But I think Grant would be in the, Grant would probably, or the code enforcement officer would be in the middle of that intent anyway. So one way or the other, just that there's some protection and expectation that it's managed in such a way as not to attract wildlife.
Are there any other specific comments that you want to include tonight in the wording of of the code or the ordinance? And if there aren't, then I think we have, we have some motions on the table that we need to get back to. Ultimately, it would be. It's, it seems like to me it would be appropriate to continue the hearing to either a date certain or not a date certain. But we do still have these motions.
I would second Cindy's motion.
Please, can we go through the motion again?
Please, can we just let Cindy's motion die from a lack of a second and start a brand new, fresh motion? I think that would be better because technically her motion died because of a lack of a second. So I think if you just want to continue the hearing, that would be a much cleaner motion.
I would like to make a motion to that wording isn't up there anymore for me to read off them, to wait until we hear from planning and zoning. So we can see what they have recommended. And I don't know if you want to specify it as attached to it. I don't know how soon their minutes will get out.
It'll be, they'll, they'll be approved right before the next meeting.
And we would get a chance to see them before the next meeting. I mean, we can do it.
It'd be pretty tight, yeah, it'd be pretty tight. And we have try to annexation and another reselling here on the same night, so.
I think it'd be nice to just do it right, get it, get, you know, get that feedback, have some of our comments perhaps, you know, addressed. I mean, this has been going on since when? Twenty twenty?
At least thirty.
Yeah, so another, another meeting or two to make sure we.
What if it was August?
Across the future.
Twenty, the second meeting of August. I also think this is something where it's already gone for a year and a half and businesses and people do, like, it'd be nice to be able to move this along so people could make improvements or understand, hey, here's the the rules that you might have to abide by. So I I don't want it to drag on too long. But if not next meeting, maybe the one after.
Isn't there a meeting on the thirteenth?
The twenty seventh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 I was looking at the wrong, yeah, twenty seventh, I guess. If.
That feels, so we would want to continue it until the August, the second meeting in August. That's my motion.
I'll second. I will second, I second.
OK, so we have Swisher and Rice. And the motion is to continue the hearing until August twenty seventh meeting. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anyone opposed to it? OK, the motion passes. Now, do we still have a second motion from Mika? Or are you withdrawing your motion?
I voted.
You never did make it. You just said you've thought about it.
OK.
OK, if there is nothing else, I would like to close the public hearing. OK, I'll close the public hearing. Are we good, Jeff?
You're good.
OK, all right. Thank you all, that's exhausting. All right, so we will revisit that. OK. Now we are at the Billy Cordova Memorial Park Budget Reallocation. Shane, is this your topic?
This is.
Laura.
Great, good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. So you all remember, I was here a month or so ago to get approval to enter the contract with Summit Construction Group for the construction of Billy Cordova Memorial Park. That approval was granted for no more than the amount of, I believe it was eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. And some hundred on top, I don't have that exact number in front of me. Since then, we have had some positive challenges. Or, yeah, things have been going positive. And we have signed that agreement with Summit Construction. On June eighteenth, we received the forty-nine thousand from the Chief of County Conservation Trust Fund that they had originally allocated to the Arizona Street Bridge. We are just about ready, getting, getting, getting close to be ready to selling all the bench sponsorships as well as finalizing the the contract with Summit and basically just kind of firming up the numbers from from last time. So this would be just a basically reallocating funds from from a few projects to be able to complete our top priority project for this year a pretty considerable amount of time since the the original concept of a park in the sunset Vista Neighborhood was approached. So as you can see on the graph there, a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or sorry, one million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars in available funds from the far left-hand category. Like I said, we were able to, you know, take a few things out of the the contract with Summit Construction Group, brought that total contract down to eight hundred and sixty-four thousand and almost three hundred dollars. Are, and then ACA basically kind of after those, and then we also reduced the memorial art and removed the outdoor workout equipment for the project as we spoke about in the last meeting where we discussed this project and the funding for it. And then lastly, ACA pledged to basically cover the back end, the back end of our shortfall, the eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, potentially more depending on the amount of materials that are purchased through them throughout the construction process. And that has been passed along to our contractor Summit Construction Group and they're going to do everything they can to to go through ACA as much as possible. The the only hurdle is hauling, just because ACA doesn't have many trucks available, but we've given them a number of other hauling resources around town and there'll probably be some in-kind hauling from town as well, for the project as well. So that leads us to the actual funds to reallocate. So the the capital improvement funds to reallocate on the top, top right corner, it would be nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from the rodeo grounds, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Walton Loop and four hundred, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars from all the other project, which would leave a remaining amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve in that ball field turf project. But the combination of those funding sources get us to total available funds that match the grand total of our cost estimates at the moment. And yeah, be on on track to wrap up the project in October, November. Any questions?
Are there still volunteer days?
Yes, the first volunteer day is going to be Saturday, October, or sorry, Saturday, August twenty-fourth. That is the community build day for the playground. I think pretty soon here we'll be opening, what we're going to do, kind of a closed, probably do it for a kind of a by invitation only registration for that community build day. We've had a lot of people expressed interest from St. Fire, Billy's family, people that have been involved in the project for a while. So kind of giving that group the opportunity to volunteer first. That playground community build day is going to be a little bit smaller. And talking with Star Playground, the playground manufacturer, they recommend thirty or so very skilled volunteers rather than a hundred volunteers of, who knows what you're getting, so.
We're just here for the T-shirt and hot dog.
But and then there will be a second community build day towards the back end of the project. We'll know more as it gets closer. It'll likely be in October, probably a Saturday as well. But that would be a kind of more of a town-led community build day rather than just a playground community build. So that one could be pretty much open to anybody. That would be installing the five gallon plantings and smaller, constructing the trail that leads to the park, putting up the tree, deer fencing around the trees and constructing the labyrinth. That would all be that second community build day and we could have a lot, open to a lot more help on that day just because we have a lot wider range of projects and that'll be probably one of the last steps in the actual construction of the park.
So any cost savings because of volunteers? Those are already built into your numbers here.
Correct.
And I would assume that you've evaluated whether there are any other ways that volunteers could help.
We we've, from the beginning of the process, we've tried to, because there is so much community interest, we've tried to have as many opportunities as possible. Unfortunately, with construction and warranties, that kind of threw a lot of those ideas out of the window. No, town, town can install the irrigation system. Well, no, you want the contractor to do that because then you have the warranty on those items. So unfortunately, we've, the the items available for community builder kind of all we have left at the moment. But yeah, we've, we tried as much as possible to keep that in there.
OK, great.
Andrew. On the the capital funds to reallocate the Walton Loop, is that, is that just, if in the project's done or we removing scope from that project?
Both the rodeo grounds and Walton Loop projects are complete.
OK, so we we accomplished our scope and we realized savings.
Yes.
OK, so we're not short in either one of those two.
No.
And then the ball field turf reallocation, that's just money budgeted and that will be a future project at some point.
Yeah, that was, we had budgeted a hundred thousand last year. We spent about seventeen thousand kind of evaluating, getting some engineering of possible solutions to fix the, fix the ball field drainage issue that was kind of flooding the ball field. We have those studies, we have, we have those solutions. And yeah, basically, I I think as, you know, we've got a pretty good handle on the drainage. You know, we haven't flooded once this year. We haven't had a huge rainstorm, but.
So basically you're saying, but those, those are funds you're not anticipating spending this year there, so let's put them here.
Correct. That would be at the soonest, the twenty twenty-five projects. But that's like, likely going to be seed money for a future grant.
OK.
Thank you.
Other questions? So there's a resolution number fifty-seven. Would someone like to make a motion in regard to that?
I move we adopt resolution fifty-seven, series twenty twenty-four.
Second.
So we have Rice and Lucrezzi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? And the motion passes. Right, all right now. Now we're going to go to the budget kickoff. Does anybody need a break before we do that? Let's take. Yeah.
I'm having some health issues, so I need to log off tonight. So I'm sorry I'll miss the the piece on the budget. But thanks for allowing me to join via Zoom and my apologies for running late and leaving early.
Yeah, if there's any way you could leave your sound on, it might help.
Take care of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, take care of yourself.
It's very acceptable to leave early to make up for coming in late. I do it all the time.
Thank you, Andrew. I promise, I'm going to the doctor tomorrow, so I'll let you guys know how it goes, but everything should be fine.
OK, thank you for coming. OK, let's take a seven-minute break. Okay, let's take a seven-minute break. Okay, good. It's nine fourteen and we are resuming the meeting. We are on item D, twenty twenty-five budget kickoff.
Yeah, so by this team just filed the audit, so it's time to get right back into budget. Yep, it'll be a good five-month process. Department of Local Affairs with the state really kind of provides a nice general timeframe to it. A draft budget is required to be provided to the board governing body by October fifteenth. And that's the state being the teacher that's like, don't wait till the last minute to turn in your paper. You gotta have a draft first and then you gotta fine tune it from there. So smart on their part. So really last year it'll follow pretty closely to last year's process. This is an additional one. Pretty robust, a lot of public input associated with it. This first step in it is really to just kind of get you thinking, thinking about potential priorities moving into the next fiscal year and beyond. You've got the twenty, the five-year capital improvement plan in front of you and then now comes from the planning session. There's a lot of opportunity to provide that input through liaisons with advisory boards. But just as priorities will be submitted by department heads, advisory boards, there's an opportunity to kind of highlight anything that you may want staff to just research some budgetary estimates. It prevents kind of getting into October, November and you say, hey, this would be great. Not knowing kind of how much cost is associated with it, what potential roadblocks there might be to actually be able to do it the next fiscal year. So highlighting anything at this point really provides opportunity for staff to take those back and put some numbers to it. And kind of create a roadmap from there and then put it on the list with everything else. So really it is early in the process, we're making a list, making a big list. And then we're from that list be able to prioritize with available funds as we kind of everything fine tuned. So not really intended to be like fully in depth outside of that. It kind of just meant to be a discussion if you've got, if you've had something like, say, this is something at least we wanna look further into, what would it cost? This is a priority. That's what we're looking for here.
Well, I'm just scrolling through this portion of the information, I guess on the budget calendar, just to understand first. So the list of all the requests title, I guess, what was it? Page ninety-nine? So one more down.
These capital projects.
Yeah.
This is the five-year capital improvement plan right now.
Right. So just looking at those, so just, is there any, I mean, as the airport liaison, I know it says it's scheduled for, I guess, next year, two hundred thousand fuel farm. So is that already planned for? Is that why it's highlighted or it's like, so that, is that planned for? Is that just?
This is.
Like to do?
This is what is on the list right now. And so this was updated last year with twenty twenty-four. Hasn't been updated beyond that. And so this is just kind of, it's always good to have that five-year look ahead of what potential projects are coming. Not to say these are included in any type of budget for twenty twenty-five. This is just kind of a starting. Airport with the, the fuel farm in the North April, going through design and engineering now. You know, there's a pending application, grant application that could make it actually happen. Without knowing that, it's just kind of continuing to keep an eye on it. So does he necessarily make the budget next year or is contention on grants?
Gotcha. I guess advocating a little bit for them. I know it's funny, some of their stuff is dated and some of the meetings we have. You know, things break and they're playing catch-up with the budgets they do have because there's obviously safety concerns. So things do have to get fixed. They kind of feels like it's hard for them to get ahead to, to make the, the bigger improvements, to maybe utilize the airport in additional ways, right? Bring more revenue to the town if they could update things or do, do a little bit more with it, but there was kind of something breaks and then they have to fix that and budget kind of moves around. So I'd love to be able to find more ways to if possible, help them so that they could get to a place where they could help all of us more, if you will. The only other thing, when reading this, and these are just early ideas, but it ties a little bit into the public comment tonight, who I mentioned last, last meeting, but maybe this falls into transportation master plan or doing an update there, but thinking more about sidewalks and bike lanes, how to make this a bit better with that multimodal walkability or, you know, throughout town. I had a few comments that I received and emails about some suggestions of, hey, how can we have two lanes? You know, if we made one lane, the current lane, if it's only a one side bike lane that was smaller, if you made it a little thinner with that free up space on the other side so you could have a little side. I don't know if that's possible and Sean's not here to kind of elaborate on any of that. But I think there might be more and more of a need to, to think about that and what we can do to create a safer mode of travel for folks that don't have a car, don't want to use a car, don't need to use a car. But like you said, I don't think there's any, obviously line item in there for that, but if there's some way we can maybe think about that. And again, I know Sean's not here, but that would be a priority, I think. Maybe that's transportation mash, master plan is an update. But anyhow, that's on my radar. I, I guess I will leave it there for now. I'm curious for everybody else. Oh, go ahead.
I'd certainly second the importance of updating the transportation master plan and then look at those things. I don't know if all of those roads are ours or the counties where that bike lane exists. So I don't know that we have much jurisdiction there, but at least you know, those types of things will be looked at and the, and the transportation master plan would cover all those of transportation, but that was tw- two thousand four is the last time we updated it. Twenty years. So I think that, yeah, we'd like to get that on our radar to update in an actionable way.
So. Yeah, good comments. Thank you on that. And appreciate the comments on the airport. I'm just curious if you don't mind me asking, when you say find ways to provide additional support for the airport. Is there, I mean, do you have anything specific on that? Or are you advocating for potential additional transfer from the general fund consideration for the board once we get to that point?
Yeah, I think you like, and still, that's not my world of stuff, so I'll do. Hopefully this makes sense, like, was it being like unrestricted fund balance, things like where there's the wiggle room with the funds that we can allocate that aren't earmarked for different things. Depending on what we end up with, I guess in my mind, I'm like, how can we maybe potentially prioritize some of that to make sure that, I don't know, the air, the airport could get its feet under, underneath itself in a better way so that it can stabilize and move forward from kind of what feels like maybe it's been in kind of limbo. So, but I know we won't know much of that until we see more revenue and where things are at the end of the year, but yeah, I'd like to advocate for them and.
This one in particular, we still have a possibility of getting a grant through.
Fingers are crossed.
Yeah, yeah, because this is a big number. You know.
Well, you covered part of what I was gonna say because on the county roads, I didn't know what authority we had to restrip them or even the county should pay for them to be restripped.
Yes.
Yeah.
They did do a nice job with Crossman three fifty of, of widening it and restriping it.
And also when we did three oh six and did over everything from the stoplight all the way to Taylor Reservoir, three oh six got nice bike lanes.
I, I would say, just looking at Crossman, it reminds you, like, first year it looks amazing, second year it quickly starts to grow in and deteriorate. It just shows you you can spend a lot of money on something one year and then you gotta have a follow-up maintenance. And so it's great. They did it. I, I agree with you there, but it also, yeah, that does one year and now it needs more attention.
Their nature's intense.
Yeah. I do have an article that I found on bicycle lanes that I'll, I'll send it to you.
Oh, great.
I'll send it to anybody who wants it. You like it? Okay.
Me too.
Pretty good. Well, I'll send it out or else I'll ask you guys to send it.
Good. I do have a we do have something that I didn't see on the list and I don't, I know we've talked about it before. Just want to make sure that we keep it in priority is eighty-eight doors for the community center. I think it's, I, I didn't see it. Listen, I could have skipped over it. I just want to make sure that we have that. Can I skip it?
It's listed as community center, painting room, painting.
Painting and carpet replacement. Okay, okay.
Code language.
As long as it's there and it has priority, that's, that's been a big one, that same accessible right, transportation master plan and most definitely twenty years is, is much too long. And, and then I'd love to see some conversation about possibly creative crosswalks. And I know we've kind of started that, but to get an idea of what that could look like and from a budget standpoint, to see if it's something that could be done within twenty twenty-five or a little bit farther. Enhancing the safety for those that are walking now while we wait for some of those safety enhancements to come down, down the pipeline.
One more tangential comment on page one oh one, some of the planning session outcomes. I don't know that this would rise to the level of a line item in the budget, but just as a board for us to keep as a priority to focus on employer retention. I have some thoughts about that, but maybe not for now, but I think that's just something as we go through this season to figure out what, what does it look like as a board to really focus on making sure that the employees we have or want to stay.
Yeah, turnover is very expensive, so we want to keep people as much as we can.
For instance, someone who moved here, you know, eight years ago to work, if they leave, you're likely not going to find some, you know, your pool of people who can move in here now and afford to live here and take that job is, is limited, you know? So it's a, it's a very practical matter for us to focus on employer retention.
I agree.
I was wondering on page one hundred, what, what is the description of Channel Rehab and Culver, West Main and James? What is that one? It's under Stormwater.
Jane, Jane Street Bridge, I think.
So it's not really.
Is that where it's fully narrow, the narrow little bridge?
The narrow bridge.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the whole Stormwater plan is being updated right now. So these are more placeholders.
Oh.
Stormwater is from a previous master plan.
So the West Main, Culver and the James Culver, both of them need attention.
Oh, okay.
So it's listing both.
Yeah, okay. Where's other questions?
I appreciate the, this business item because it really does make you think about, you know, what's going on and getting it in early, or at least having the discussion early, you know, to identify different things. So I mean, everything has merit, you know, you want to do it all, but talking with community members and how they feel, what they see, just so good exercise, I think.
And it'll be similar last year, there will be a need to prioritize.
Of course. Only money grew on trees.
I did notice that one of Congress, Congresswoman Peterson's priorities is safe. Safe roads for all. So I thought, well, maybe that would be a good grant that we could try to get, you know, to help with the bike lanes.
Yeah, we just have to.
Or, or the transportation plan.
So we always have to have a project ready to go to funnel in there and usually we don't have something that's like, hey, this exact thing fits the mold. And so we it's hard to guess that. Yeah, I'm gonna sell it, but the faster plan might be something that might fit. I don't know what the criteria is. I haven't seen it, but.
Yeah, that one in particular is more geared towards safety. And it's gonna be competitive if you've got unfortunately a high death rate. But definitely something we can look at as far as potential uh action plan, new, if you will. But we might look uh more locally at the state level, what uh grant opportunity.
Okay, um. Good, so um. Where do we want to go from here on the budget?
Um it's up to you. I mean, we've got a couple of things, you know, and definitely think it's worthwhile to. Try to solicit, try to nail down some numbers uh for what it would look like to uh. The expenses associated with the transportation master plan update uh as well as potential grant funding out there. Um and then there's a number of other items we can start putting numbers to um. You know, one, for instance, on the goals and progress from the planning session, the steel drive connection goal I met. With the PUC and there is a grant uh application process to request. Uh a crossing to see if we can get it. Of course, you have to have some preliminary engineering. Of course, preliminary engineering takes money. Um so allocating some funds associated there, so. It really wasn't looking for like a set. We don't have to decide anything tonight or. Uh nail anything down tonight. It was really just get you started and it's gonna be. Kind of a ro- robust process going forward from here, so um. The draft budget will be provided prior to the October fifteenth uh deadline. At that time, Clear God will open up and then we'll jump into kind of the advisory board and. Continued public hearings throughout October and November, so.
And um I was wondering if we could um make a request to fill up. To do a little budget one oh one training with particularly the new trustees, but I think all of us could use a refresher on. On how to how to use the software. How to send questions and. That would be really helpful if we could do that, I think.
Yeah, definitely, as a group or individually. As a group or individually.
Whatever works for scheduling. Sure busy, so what what's best for you?
Yeah, I don't know. It's pretty dry for a public meeting. I would just say that. Public meeting to drag through that. We can, we've done it. But I'm happy to also meet one on one. Uh as well. Because honestly, that probably gets it more thorough too. So.
I really appreciate the one on one I had with you. I think it was last year. It's sunk in a lot better for me, being able to ask questions along the way. But if you have time for that, then it's great, but if you don't.
I would definitely make time for the one on ones. I think that would be. If that works for you all the.
After the finance one on one, I that was really helpful. So a one on one budget, I think, would be nice if you can. And for me personally, at least, because a lot of questions got answered in that, so that was really helpful.
So we can just individually contact you?
Yeah, maybe we even we could do it two at a time. I mean, we could, yeah, there's multiple ways we could do that, but we can, I can definitely. Set aside time for that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so um. Are we, you know, pretty much at the end of our. Business stuff. Uh um those of trustee staff interaction. I, you know, I I also got a email from somebody, Costly, Dave Costly. I did respond to him and um asked him to. Uh consider talking to the Trails Advisory Board. Um you know, just as a starting place of making a public comment or come here and speaking to us about about bike lanes. And and I will make sure that the the article is made for everyone. Yesterday, we met with the advanced team for Senator Hickenlooper's office. And so Senator Hickenlooper will be coming um to University either the twenty seventh or twenty eighth of August. And um we would be happy to have um. A trustee be part of uh one of three different possibilities. One is uh to have show him the the um Midland Apartments. Another is to go out to the airport. Um and then the third would be a tour of fading west. He only has about an hour and a half. So um you know, we would be able to um. To have, you know, one trustee or two trustees, you know, meet with him. Not really, I mean, it's not really like a meeting, but just be there.
It's midday, I assume.
I don't know exactly.
It's not the evening.
No, I'm sure. Yeah, so I'll let you know more about that. And then um let's see, it was housing. Yeah, so that um we saw lots of stories about interlocking fire. That was good, both of you. Um and then there's the comprehensive plan advisory committee. I think that Sue Cobb is gonna be on that, right? So that'll be a good thing, I think. And then uh in a couple of meetings, we'll we'll hear from the eh Places to Age Group. That are in Salida, they're they're working on um getting some land transferred to them and then. Um getting it annexed into Salida. So it's a ten acre parcel of land down there. So they're making good headway. Then at our next meeting, we'll hear from the um Chief Housing Authority Ballot Committee. So that'll come up and they'll be looking for us to support the ballot measure. And let's see, I think that's about all I've got. So um Andrew, you wanna go next? No, Cindy?
This is minor, something to think about. Um when you go to. Different historical sites, different. Um not necessarily historical sites, but to go view and look. In places they have donation boxes that where you can donate. Could we do donation boxes to help offset the cost of maintaining all the our trails? Uh I I mean, we're not charging anybody. They're not having to give anything, but. If they truly enjoy the trails, would be would they be willing to donate a few dollars than if you have. Five thousand tourists that do a couple of dollars each. I mean, it might make a difference in the end to help offset. The cost of trails.
Or scan a code and donate a dollar because a a box full of dollars will get robbed.
Yeah, control cash is not my favorite thing.
Yeah, but if you had a code to say, hey, if you like the trail, don't make fifty cents.
A QR code, yeah, somewhere that.
That's just something to think about. My husband and I went for a ride on our anniversary and we went at Midland. It's been a long time since we've driven that Midland, took our dogs up there, whatever. After certain point, you can't drive down the Midland Trail anymore without filling out their camping thing and. Giving my I I was appalled. And then I thought, well, that's a tr- that's a dirt road. What about all the trails that we have? Yeah, so I that's what brought it to my mind. I couldn't believe that we had to. Pay something to drive on that dirt.
Is that up on the hill, you mean?
Uh Midland Trail, if you turn off on the road, there's. US Forest Service, I assume that's where from where you have to.
Is that that overlook? So if you go on beyond it without paying the fee, then you're outside of it, you know, all the money.
Yeah, but to go to see the overlook it costs money. I was like, well, that's a new one for us.
Yeah, yeah.
And I do know that we've gone places on vacation and. This, I am not comparing our trails to the Liberty Bell or anything in in Philadelphia, but. You won't believe all the donation boxes, because everything was free. But you were, they definitely had the donation boxes for you to donate money on your tours through stuff. And during um, oh, the only other thing I had was the County Road three seventeen bike lanes. I didn't know. If we would have the jurisdiction to do something with them without the county, but that was, I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Cindy.
I don't have anything with you now.
Okay, do you know?
Um I was just gonna bring up the bike stuff, but you've already, I got that same email, or at least I got an email. Probably I'm assuming the same thing, so we've addressed that already, so I don't need to bring this back up, but where is?
Um just on bikes as well, and um Kathy Borline had the public comment, um like education, we do have. Two bike to school in the past couple of years, we've offered two bike to school days. Um to try to show kids the the safe route to school, so um the education piece, I think. We're we're doing fairly well on that and alongside with the trail or the transportation master plan. Uh Trails Master Plan has a lot of that stuff in it too, so. Uh Trails and Transportation, they kind of coincide with all that safe routes, bike lanes, everything like that. Um and then also, um you know, we're often rolling on um. Billy Cordero Memorial Park, very big project. Um we are also getting very close to starting the Pocket Wave project. Um so um. The first date we are allowed to get into the river to work is, I believe it's August sixteenth, which is a Friday. So planning to start construction um on August nine, Monday, August nineteenth. Um so um for that project, um there is um. Well over hundred and seventy five thousand in the budget. Um we are under contract with um the contractor for. Um a hundred and forty seven thousand and then about thirty thousand for engineering. Um there was um a request for a change order for almost ten thousand dollars in additional engineering. Um and there is a possible um change change order coming for deconstruction price. Um just um because of a few design changes. Um the recreation engineering and planning that's done the design, um you know, they've learned a lot from the Scout Wave and a few. A ton of other waves that they've been constructing, so um just a few um minor. Design changes to um improve performance, keep it safe at high water um as um. But that also might result in quantity changes for the construction, you know, just more rock or concrete, certain things like that, so. Um some possible um change change orders, um that budget cost might be going up a little bit. Um but we are very confident that would all be um covered by donations that are still coming in for that project, so. Um so far this year, we've got seventeen hundred um in donations um plus planning on. Um Paddle Fest has not made their kind of annual contribution that they typically make. Um and as well as be uh friends of the Bevy River Park, so confidently we can cover all of that with the doing. All of those change orders with the donations, but. Keeping that on you guys' radar um and should be starting here pretty soon.
I have nothing.
Yeah, two quick things. One, uh just speaking about the comprehensive plan, that steering commit- committee. Um there there are kind of two, well, three groups of people, the steering committee, we'll put John last, but the steering committee is really. This diverse demographic, age, kind of experience within town is kind of this. Like a real kind of um. I don't know, novel sort of a group of people that kind of help steer the thing. And then there's like groups of like co-creators and key key stakeholder kind of things, and there'll be some. One on one outreach to those folk and so um and then there's folks for surveys and questionnaires and things like that, so. Um just if you hear, you know, different uh. I don't know, discussions are like, hey, why wasn't I in this group or that group? Well, they're probably in, because you're intended to play a different role. And what was that specific role, so. We need next week. The key committee, the the advisory committee. The other thing, talking about um. You know, annexation of things, there are a couple um zoning and rezoning questions that are coming before the board in the next. Uh month or so, which I view as things and just a reminder that rezoning and Jeff can correct me when I'm wrong. Which is often, but the. Rezoning has both this legislative and a quasi judicial potential and like usually if it's. We're rezoning all of these properties, it's more legislative, but if it's a particular property. It's really that quasi judicial, so just be aware of that if if uh you're not supposed to talk about those outside the public area. Thank you.
Uh I guess just CHA, you'll see him for the ballot resolution at the next meeting. We did, I was on the transition committee, made a recommendation and I think the board selected an interim director. Um they're kind of, they sent them the offer, I believe, once that's finalized, kind of a press release will go out. Uh through CHA, so getting their feet under them on that side of things. Also having discussions administratively as far as the uh intergovernmental agreements go, both the founding uh this. IGA that established it and then the financing IGA, which actually. Runs out December thirty one, twenty twenty four, so identifying what costs. It takes to run CHA, it's about passes, if it doesn't pass. And what that breakdown is, so that'll be coming to you guys through the budget process as well. Uh that's all I've got.
Jeff, got anything for us?
Uh nothing legal, you know, although I was gonna say that, you know, back in the old days, I I used to come to every single one of your meetings in person. You know, come uh, you know, blizzards or not, and I feel like I haven't been up to see you all and you have new trustees and. I I love the ability to do this remotely, but you know, I I was just thinking maybe. At some point, I should just come up in person and just say hello and. Meet your new trustees in person. I'm I'm not trying to invite myself up to get extra drive time, but I just thought, you know, it's. Good to say hello in person once in a while, so. I I don't know what's the best meeting on, but you know, maybe one of the one of the upcoming ones in the near future would be a good one.
Yeah, good.
So I'll just coordinate for Brian, I guess, but let let you know, just I don't want you to think I'm just hiding behind the computer screen for my entire legal career moving forward, so.
I got some ideas, Jeff.
They need to see how tall you are.
I I think I I haven't shrunk much yet, so.
Well, you can't tell how tall you are when you're just hitting shoulders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, Disney, like I said, I I don't, it's not like it's I'm I'm, you know, dying to spend all my time in the car coming up, but I, you know, I think it does make a difference once in a while to be there in person, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um. There's one item left on the agenda.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, we have Rice and Hike. Uh all in favor? Anyone opposed? Yeah, the motion passes, the meeting is adjourned.